Okay, I'm going to call the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge. Our meeting is September 14th to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Yeller.
Here.
Mcmally.
Here. Okay, can we stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, do you have your mic on?
Lisa, can you provide us some guidance as to whether or not this meeting has been properly posted?
It has been posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, hometown base, and the village website.
Okay, looks like we're all right there. Let's move on to public appearances. Okay, we're going to let you come up. We've got a number of people here, so if you don't mind, can you come up and introduce yourself and speak at the table, please? Mike will start with you. Everybody will have two and a half minutes, Lisa? Two and a half minutes. Chrissy, can you time these? Okay, just let us know, and then I'll let the speaker know. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Good evening. My name is Mike Ryber. I'm from the Dancing Goat Distillery. Thank you for giving me a brief moment of your time here, the Village of Cambridge Trustees. We wanted to just come back and circle back with the board to let them know that we're continuing with offline conversations and discussions about some of the activities we have going on, which is a very positive step moving forward. We want to make sure that, going forward though, that items that are requested for being bullet point items on the agenda, make it to the agenda. And if not, we'd like to make sure that they get amended to reflect as such. The topics we have in discussion aren't just affecting the Dancing Goat. They affect Cambridge as a community as a whole. All right? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Is there an agenda? Is there something missing from the agenda? Or is it a request? No? Okay.
No, no, no. Okay, next presenter. Anybody care to make a public comment with the audience? Mr. Hurl.
I'm Mike Hurl, and I am working with Todd Schultz out on the east side of our southwest side of town here. I've got just a couple of notes I'd like to read to you folks. We are working on a very unique situation that we believe helps the Village of Cambridge for years to come. As you know, my partner Todd Schultz and I are working on to develop the land on the south side of Highway 12 at the Highway 134 intersection. While working on this project, we were made aware of a contentious situation taking place within the community regarding the solar farm development. Todd and I saw this as an opportunity, and we contacted the land owner in question, which is owned by the Hinchleys. Upon talking with the Hinchleys, we found them very willing to work with us and were very willing to talk to us about annexing 114 acres of land that were already committed to the solar farm and let us move forward with requesting annexation into the village for future development. When we contacted the solar company, we found them very willing to work with us also. At this point, Todd and I saw a willingness of people to work with one another, but we decided we better investigate a little bit further. Being developers, we wanted to see if we would have users for any of those 114 acres. We contacted home builders that specialize in entry-level housing, and we received an overwhelming response and a positive. We contacted apartment developers and had the same overwhelming response, very positive. Since we specialize in business highway use, we contacted several users who are very interested in buying some land there also. When we approached the village in the meeting a few weeks ago and asked for a letter of support, we did so in good faith, but continued our efforts. While spending lots of money and refining the TIA studies and revamp our CSM for the Phase 1 project, everything seems to be going in a very good direction. What we have is a willingness of the Hinchleys, the solar people, and the developers, all willing to work together here. And we're getting along very well, and we all have the same thing in mind. What we need is a partner with the village to join us in helping us get this done. There are several things that we need to have done that only the village can take on for us, and the others will come up here and remind you folks of what those items are. But at this point, between the solar company, the developer, and the Hinchleys, we have a win-win-win. If we could add the village to it, we'll get a win-win-win-win. Thank you.
Okay, others that might like to speak? Public appearance. Mr. Hinchley.
Thank you, Mark. Hello, fellow board members. Dwayne Hinchley, my family, Anna, son-in-law Kevin are here tonight, Tina. We're here to show the support we have for this project of doing this development. Our thought was, when we got together, Todd and I about four months ago roughly, and started talking about how this could work out with the other project there at the corner 134, too, behind the, by the Quick Trip, I guess, you know? It seemed very integral to have these two together. They're very symbiotic, I believe, for putting in infrastructure and stuff. But we're looking for a real clear path from you folks here at the village. Timelines for me, I've got to make a decision here soon that maybe I'll pull my support on this because I've got other financial considerations for the property. I've always got, the solar is there, and we've got other farm leases with them. This is just not the only one there in Christiana Township. So with that being said, that's why we offered this 114 acres for the village expansion, the concern for growth. And with that, if it would come to fruition, and it would give you a tax base, I know financial considerations, tight economy always, we were always fighting tight economy. So used to that with the farm stuff. I was a little dismayed when I read that $60,000 was being put up against to fight the solar project when I'm offering with my family this land to hopefully appease some of this and work it out together. So that's kind of where I'm looking. I want to see the withdrawal in that, I think, and the support for this. I believe a couple-week timeframe. We need to have some real clear direction because we've kind of been in discussions, Mark, for a little over two months directly with yourselves, but usually we're further along in the process with this. I serve in the Plan Commission of the Town of Christiana, and usually things move a little quicker than this for a go-ahead anyway. And then you've got the county decisions and everything else to follow. So I guess that's my stake here, what I want to get across, like to see it all work out.
All right, thank you. Chrissy, just if you don't mind, 20 seconds. Mr. Hinchley, on a totally unrelated matter.
Yep.
I thought that you and your family, I haven't had a chance to speak about this, I thought you and your family did a wonderful job with the dairy.
Breakfast.
Breakfast.
Yeah, Dane County Dairy Breakfast.
You must have had a lot of people out there.
Roughly 2,750.
Okay.
But not official count yet, but it was raining in Madison that morning, and we were hoping for 5,000, and if it didn't rain, I think we would have hit it.
Well, I had eggs and lots of chocolate milk, so.
Yeah.
But you and your family and everybody else did a wonderful job, so thank you for the fine representation.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
Okay, others that would like to speak? We're going to go with Dwayne's wife here. If you can introduce yourself, ma'am.
I am Tina Hinchley. I am here with my family, my husband, my daughter and son-in-law. I am coming in front of the village board to let you know that we want to come together for a solution for some of the issues that are happening in Cambridge right now. There are a few things that we feel are very important to the people of our community, but we also have to look forward to what is the best for our own family. As the landowners of the property, that is 114 acres just outside the edge of town, we have invested a lot in this farmland to make it better for farming, but also better for developing. As we see it, we have two options. The first option is to work together with our community to help it grow for the future. I have many images of affordable housing for families to come into our community, to be a part of our school district. And, you know, the more homes in this community will strengthen our neighborhoods. It will also help strengthen our tax base. This land is the perfect spot for families to have a home, for their children to walk to school, and to become a neighborhood on the edge of town. Dwayne and I have met with others, Mike and Todd, even you, Mark, and Aiden and Dan, and it was even back in July. We have tried to move this forward, this conversation form, excuse me, we have tried to move this conversation forward by making firm plans. We have attended village meetings, we have read the minutes, yet we really can't see that there's any real conversations going forward or any commitment towards this plan. Without the village getting on board, please understand that if we cannot make this work, our land still can go to the solar project. And that would be our second option. We already have a contract with them, and to be sure, it would be a better option financially for us as a family. But if we are able to come to an agreement with this village and move this forward, we can cancel that contract. And this can be a win for all of us. It can be a win for our community, and we can push that solar out a little bit farther so it's not the welcome right into town.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, the village wrote a letter of support for this project, correct?
We're going to be talking about this. I don't want to get into anything right now. This is just a public hearing.
No, I understand that. It's just.
Yeah. Others that, okay, Dan?
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm Dan Litchfield with Invenergy and Koschkong Solar. I lead our renewable development work in the Upper Midwest. It's good to see you again. I want to echo what we just heard from Mike and the Hinchleys. We're the company proposing the large solar project. We really would like to work with the village. It seems this is a solution. We hear the village saying you want to grow. The Hinchleys are willing to sell. Mike and his partner are willing to develop, and we're willing to do our little part and release the solar lease we have on that land. I think you've got to defer more to them on the timing, but we're in the middle of this permitting process. I can see it is something that can be a financial burden to the village. We're hoping this is an easier path that gives the village an opportunity to grow like we hear you want to do. And that's most of what I wanted to say. We look forward to working together in good faith and try to find this win-win-win-win. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Others? Todd?
Good evening. Thanks for all your time.
Can you introduce yourself?
My name is Todd Schultz. I'm with Westgate Partners regarding the potential development of the Hinchley property. To your point, Mike and I did receive a letter of support that you all agreed to as the developers of the project. I would, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I'm assuming that the Hinchleys and maybe Invenergy would also like some sort of a discussion or interaction with the village on the same level that you graciously afforded Mike and myself. No one's hollering at me, so I'm assuming I'm not misstating anything here. But at the end of the day, there's four parties that have to come together here, and we've been working diligently trying to do that, but all four of us as individual entities are going to need to compromise. None of us are going to get all of our wants and requests met without hurting someone else in this process. So the level of workability and agreement that we have so far, we'd like to see continue. So I would like you to consider any means necessary if you all still want the potential growth on the west side of town as opposed to the solar panels up to existing boundaries, that you would consider contemplation and discussion with the Hinchleys and with Invenergy along the levels that you've afforded Mike and myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for addressing that.
We are going into closed session, and we will be talking about this matter as a board later this evening, and just as a heads up, so we are trying to move ahead with this. Is there anybody else that cares to make a public comment at this time? Mr.?
Oh, boy.
Steve Strass.
Hello, I'm Steve Strass. I'm a past village president and a current resident of the village. And I just want to go on record to say that I was disappointed to hear that the village board was hiring an attorney to fight the solar project. On the one hand, I know we have development needs, but it's up to the landowners to decide what to do with their land, and I don't, and the Public Service Commission makes calls on energy projects. I think that money spent for attorneys was not a great decision. So I'm happy to hear that there could be another alternative, and I want to encourage this board to definitely consider working with the parties involved to work out an agreement, compromise, as it would be, to develop that land and, you know, move forward. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to make a comment? Fair warning. Okay, we'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Okay, discussion necessary? Anybody have any questions? All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of August 24th and the Economic Development Committee of August 30th. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it carries. President's report, we're going to have a long night, so I have one item, but you know what? I can hold off, and I can bring that up at another time.
Oh, boy.
So we'll do that. Library Board, September 8th.
Well, I tried to join the Library Board that night virtually, but I couldn't get on, and I couldn't get in contact with Joan, you know, 15 and 20 minutes beforehand, so.
Okay.
And she never tried to recontact me, so I didn't attend the board meeting.
All right, okay. So we have nothing to report there, and it's, Lisa, are you aware of anything with the Library Board? Has Joan said anything to you?
I know she, they were trying to get you on. I'm not sure what the issue was.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'm going to work on that with just her, so.
Yeah.
Doesn't happen again, because it sounds like we may go virtual anyway, so.
All right.
Future.
Okay, thank you. And then we're going to bounce it right back to you. Lisa, village office updates?
Just a couple things. I did recently attend the Wisconsin Municipal Works Association Conference. Lot of very informative sessions covering elections, liquor licensing, leadership, ethics, levy limits, employment, hiring, handbooks, so a lot of different topics covered. I did also receive a $100 scholarship to reimburse the village for a portion of those costs, so that was much appreciated. Lot of ongoing projects, a number of which are on this agenda. The bike trail, we're meeting with the winery and the distillery later this week on a number of different issues, the solar, the WIDEX application, which is on the agenda. A lot of big issues going on, a lot of moving parts, so.
Questions for Lisa? All right, thank you, Lisa. Let's move on. Bills. What's the summary here, Chrissy, before we?
First round went out with $64,516.85. The second round that was done today is $2,635.97 for a grand total of $67,152.82.
I will make a motion to pay the bills instead of them.
I will second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or concerns about the bills?
Yeah, we spent $756 on I.
Bluebird Pass. Is that to turn the lights on and off in that area?
What was it?
What was that?
It says it's listed as streetlights, install I, Bluebird Pass, Waverly, Chickadee, 756 bucks.
Was it ready electric?
Ready electric, yep.
Yeah, they do all their work on the streetlights.
So is that to turn the lights on and off?
I'm guessing so. I can't say for sure, but they do do all the work on the streetlights for us, the village owns.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Eric? Anybody else? Okay, we've got a motion and a second to pay the bills. Roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Yeller. Yes.
Mcmally.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Okay, moving on. New business. We've got the Village of Cambridge Resolution 2021-07 authorizing submission of the WEDC grant. Lisa, what can you tell us about this?
As you know, I've been working with the control controls on their project, the inner main. The first submission of information was approved. They asked for additional, so we've been applying that. Part of it is a resolution saying that, yep, the village board is supportive of applying for this grant. We apply on their behalf. We are the pass-through. Money comes to us if then it gets turned over to them. So this is one of the needed items in the final submission for the grant.
Have we done this with anybody else in recent memory?
Yep.
Can you, how did that go?
The last one we did was with Roque Otterie, when they relocated up here, moved from lower mains to upper. It was the same grant, the same process.
Okay. All right. Anybody care to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the authorization of the submission of the WIDEX CDI grant application for the Cambridge Inn on Main.
I'll second.
Looks like Eric, you get the second?
Sure.
All right. Any questions before we vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moving on, the bike trail, relocation of a portion of the force main.
Brian is through Town and Country. Let M take over in his package, and then we'll back even to Karen.
Brian, if you can identify yourself.
My name is Brian Burquist. I'm president at Town and Country Engineering. We're working on the path project for the village. I have a memo in your packet, but to save everybody from reading it, I'll just kind of go through the highlights and certainly take any questions. Path project is proceeding. As Lisa mentioned, we've got a meeting on Friday with the Dancing Goat and the winery to talk about some of the easements. From just progress standpoint, most of the base has been cut in, and we're about ready to start retaining wall, or the contractor is ready to start retaining wall. During that excavation, so you can kind of see that notch out in the hill, they discovered that a village force main, that's pressurized sewer pipe that runs from a pump station right at the winery corner at Matt's, Ken's Way, up around, up the hill and around a corner into some gravity sewers there. It was about six feet off of where the plan said it was located, said it was built.
That's a significant amount.
It is. Yes, it is.
How did, how did that, is that worth investigating?
It was a, that was a private project, so a developer built it.
Okay.
At this point, I don't think it would be worth the village's time or investment to chase that down.
Okay.
Given the, some of the alternatives that are available to you.
Do we know the engineer of record at the time?
What's that?
Do we know the engineer of record at the time for this project?
I believe it was Quam Engineering.
Okay, thank you.
So if you've walked up there, you may see there's a pipe kind of sticking out where we'd like to put the wall.
So had we known that the pipe was there, we would have made contingencies to not put the bike path there. So if the engineer on record has put his pipe in the wrong place, why isn't the engineer of record responsible for the financial situation that we're in now?
Not necessarily. If we had X-ray vision and knew that the pipe was in the wrong spot.
I don't need X-ray vision when I have a proper plan presented to.
Oh, yeah.
Correct? I'm not knowing if you.
Oh, sure, but just to go back a little bit, had I known the pipe was here instead of where the plan showed.
Right.
What we would have done is just tried to accommodate it. You know, we would have either tried to convince DOT to move.
The village is on the hook for that error in the plan.
Well, if I could just continue a little bit, what we would have done is we would have said, well, this is the way where we'd like to put it. DOT, this is DOT right-of-way. So they want all non-highway stuff pushed as far away from the highways possible, always have, always will. I don't think, and we've actually talked with them since I sent this memo, they would not have and will not allow you to move the path closer to the highway. But it would have been bid, just as part of the project, because DOT kind of controlled where that path goes. To your point about, you know, had it been where everybody thought it was, and my continued suggestion that I think you're going to spend a lot more than $5,000 to chase that down, that engineer I'm sure is going to point at that contractor, and it's going to turn into months and thousands, well beyond these costs, because we would have recommended, you know, 90 days ago that we're going to have to move the main. You know, instead of having this discussion tonight, we would have had it 90 days ago. So that's really the practical difference of where you're at. To get a path from A to B, that main is in the wrong, it's in an unfortunate spot, whether it's right or wrong. It is where it is at this point.
So it was always in the wrong spot, six feet or not?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So in the memo, I presented two options. One was bringing the path closer to the highway. Because that slope is so steep, it starts out a little flat and then gets steeper. In order to, if the DOT would have allowed it, which we've since learned that they're not, we would have just needed a higher retaining wall, which of course costs dollars. We had estimated that to be $12,000. The other option is to just move the pipe out of the way. We do have a firm not-to-exceed proposal from the contractor to do that for five, not to exceed $5,000 based on time and material. So we do recommend that alternative. So we do recommend that alternative, to, to continue the project and complete the project. Before you consider that, Lisa and I had been chatting throughout the project about where the budget, available budget is. And we've been living in a uni, I've been living in a universe where it's a very hard ceiling, you, it's, that's it. And that's based on the, the grants that we secured for the project, as well as a, a number of donations from private and public entities. To go back a little bit, we had set the bids up specifically knowing that that was a hard, hard, hard cap, and we presented a contract award to still leave a little bit of fluff in there, about $16,000 worth of contingency. As it sits, you know, that's, that's why we always have and always do recommend contingency when things like this come up, like a kitchen remodel, you find stuff that you didn't know. Between this item and some substandard soils, we had anticipated some substandard soils on the project, we've run into a few more. We're getting real close to using up that contingency, and we are not done with the work by any stretch. There's a lot of wall to be built, a lot of paving to be paved, and a lot of grass to be planted. The project is set up as a unit price project, as, as we always have done, meaning you pay for what gets built. Every square yard of grass that gets planted, every square foot of wall that gets built, every ton of asphalt that gets used, with the intention that you should pay what, for what got built and not, not more. So, as we finish things out, I always get a little nervous when we get, we're using up the contingency when we're about two-thirds done. So, I just asked Lisa if I could have a couple minutes tonight to get a feel for, from you all, if we, if you have, as we enter the seventh, eighth, and ninth innings here, and we get to a point where we are tapping on that budget ceiling, the grants plus the donations, should I start looking for ways to shed cost? Or is there a dollar, or a thousand dollars, or $10,000 of other funds, and specifically I'm thinking perhaps, you know, removing the force main could be, could be construed as a sanitary sewer utility cost. Or if you're telling me it's a hard, 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 then, then I would start trying to look for ways to shed cost, because again, you pay by the ton of asphalt, by the square foot of grass, and so on. And one fairly bite-sized way to cut about $10,000 would be to take the path along the north side of Vineyard and just move it onto the road. That is how we're gonna be doing the path on Kenzeth Way, for the same reasons, 'cause the bids came in, you didn't have enough money to build it off-street on Kenzeth Way. So, on Kenzeth Way, no matter what, it's going to be on-street pavement markings. On Vineyard, when you make that left turn or westward turn, we could put it off-street, or if we moved it on-street, that would, that'd be one way to save a decent chunk of cost. It is a dead-end road, obviously, so you don't have a ton of traffic on it. So, that was, I had two questions for the board. One, it's not much of a question, 'cause DOT is not keen on moving that path, but can we proceed?
Can I circle back towards the street?
Yeah, go ahead.
You said it was a dead end. Are there crossings, or any other areas where you see people running into, like, having a traffic issue, or some sort of concern in terms of safety?
Not specifically, particularly given that Kenzeth Way is already gonna be on pavement. And you have in this, whatever folks wanna call the whole connection, but from northwest of the village to south-central of the village, there are a number of crossings, a number of on-street portions, and those seem to be working really well, in a very safe manner. So both your users of the path and the motoring public seem to be kinda used to that phenomenon. This, this particular stretch would be just like that, except less, you know, less traffic, less exposure for either a little kid or a commuter, you know, that kinda thing. And it's, it's kinda that one of those bite-sized chunks that, in the event, you know, you get additional grant funding in two or 20 years, you can always move it off, off-road. Same with Kenzeth, you could do the same thing there.
Is this over by the apartments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I used to live over there, it's, I mean, the only traffic is apartment traffic, so it's not, it's pretty calm, that's a pretty good option, I think. A couple of questions there, with the substandard soil, can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. The, the cross-section of the path is two inches of asphalt, 12 inches of rock. We always account for about 25% of the project site is gonna require more rock.
Okay.
So when, when we set up this unit price bid that I talk about, we calculate how many, it's a simple math, you calculate how many tons you need, and we add 25% to just try to get a handle on some built-in potential extra cost. Coming through the, the farm field, the foundation land, that was a, there's just a lot of topsoil.
Yeah.
Which is just not what you wanna build, certainly a roadway, but not really a path either, and so we ended up adding another six inches of soil for about 400 feet there, excuse me, 600 inches, six inches of rock for about 400 feet.
Rock and stone, okay. What, for your retaining walls, are you guys using, like, limestone blocks, or what are you guys using?
No, this would be the keystone system, which is what DOT uses. They are, they're massive, they're about 75 pounds each, but they're prefabbed, keyed into each other, and stepped back at about one inch per foot. They're, they're massive, massive blocks.
Okay, that's the most affordable option?
It is the most affordable, long-term option.
Okay.
Limestone itself is actually a little more expensive.
Right.
And from an engineering standpoint, honestly, we prefer the blocks because they just last forever. And you don't have to worry about, limestone in particular, if it gets moisture in it, it can start to, start to flake, and some other communities we work in have seen relatively young walls look pretty crummy. This is more, much more of a generational application.
Do you need to put footings for that?
Somewhat, well, we always bury a block, the blocks are 12, 11 inches tall, so we'll always bury a block, and then there's six inches of base under that. This particular wall is also tied back into the bank because of its height.
Does the cost savings to going on-street cover the cost of fixing the pipe?
Yes, in fact, it would not only cover that, but also provide some head, headroom to restore some of that contingency.
Thank you. I apologize for my earlier tone.
No, please don't, please do not, no problem.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
No, but if I could get, I guess just a formal direction to go, if, if it pleases the board, to go ahead with relocating the pipe. The contractor is looking to start that literally tomorrow, I, I held them off until after the board meeting for some direction. And then also, if you have a pleasure on Vineyard Drive.
Okay, what deal with these and the order you gave them, is there any?
Would it be safe to assume that the, like, trail committee would prefer it to be off-road?
Yes, and we would too. That's, you get a lot more use if it's off-road, people seem to feel a little more safe if it's off-road, but a, as you've seen, as it currently circuits its way through town, sometimes it's just not possible.
What's the timeline between, you said it could, at some point, still go off-road? So if there was an additional donor or grant that came up, at what, could that happen at any time?
Yeah. You own the plans, so you could dust them off and, and did it as part of.
So you could make this decision, and then the bike committee could continue to work to get that portion off-road?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does that answer your concern?
One question to Brian, would it be feasible to do the force main, and then see where we're at with contingencies, and make the decision on taking it to off-road?
It's a good question.
Depending if we have the money or not.
I would be a little anxious about doing that, because it, it's kind of as the project is wrapping up, and I, you almost don't know exact, not enough time. One other, if, if you're interested in using all the grant, because that's the other kinda shoe here, is that if you don't use it, you don't get to keep the money. Dane County and DNR keep the money. So one thing that Lisa and I had talked about, partly because grant funding wasn't available at the time, there's that gravel path in front of the pig.
Yes.
That was built, ready to rock and roll and pave, but that surface was the sacrificial lamb of that project. It was a hard cap grant, and it was not paved, because there wasn't funding for it. So we had kicked around the idea, or I had that, you know, if you have another $3,000, $4,000 at the end, that would be very easy to add at the end, 'cause paving's almost the last thing you could do. So, that, that's certainly something that could be included in the ninth inning if, if some of those dollars are still there.
So would you come back before the board in the ninth inning, so we could discuss those options, and what the budget looks like, and do you need approval from the board at that point, or are you?
I, I only need to make you comfortable. So, if, I, I would say from a practical standpoint, it gets really tricky to hit the board meetings in tune with construction, so.
Sure.
If, if you think there is interest in spending every last dime.
Oh, yeah.
I would recommend that, that paving the path in front of the Piggly Wiggly is your best, most flexible option, and also if, if you could either delegate that decision, I could present it to Lisa, or to Mark, or, or someone, someone who's, can make a decision that day, or that week, as opposed to waiting for a board meeting, would be a lot cleaner from a construction standpoint.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we'll start with the first one. Your recommendation is the $5,000 for the, the movement, the relocation of the portion of the force main.
I'll make that motion to relocate.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Good, good option.
I have a question. The force main, how is that gonna, where you're gonna move it, how is that gonna affect where the retention wall is?
We would be relocating it to actually be right under the path, which.
Say again?
Right underneath the new path. So it would, as it sits, one of the downsides of, of the original design is that the pipe is on the uphill side of, of the wall, which does present a problem for maintaining it in the future. Now, these pipes can go easily 70 years without anybody touching them, but if we're gonna move it, we're, I'd like to, I was planning on moving it to be right underneath the path, that way if it ever breaks in the future, plugs in the future, in a century when you need to replace it, it's easy to get equipment to it, instead of having to mountain climb over the top of that wall.
So that's a not-to-exceed $5,000?
That is correct.
If there's an issue in moving the pipe, is, do you, like, what if it goes south? That's a pressurized sewer pipe?
Yep.
Okay, so that's fine?
Very routine, very routine.
Okay. Okay?
Alright, we got a motion and a second, any further questions? Okay, I'll call the question, roll call, please.
Trustee Whitmore.
Yes.
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 Rose.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Yes, alright, so you've got that. Now they're recommending planning for up to $10,000 of, of future cost. How do we feel about that? Want to do that now, or do we wanna wait?
Well, I, I would like to make a motion to approve the relocating at this time of the, to the on-street portion of the bike path, to create an additional, not surplus, padding for the budget, with the understanding that there may be some ability to put it back on later, and that's my motion.
Alright, does everybody understand that?
That's a great motion.
Quiet or civil, Holly.
Okay, you understood it, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
I think it's smart to have that contingency with, you know, a good portion of the project coming up, and having the option to, to bring it back off-road, I, I think it's smart, and it gives them the flexibility to go forward with construction, instead of waiting for us, so I think that's the way to go.
Then, can we have a, potentially a third motion, to delegate the approval of any future changes to, to sort of use up whatever money we can, either to you, Mark, or to Lisa, or whoever, I don't know who it is, but.
I would second Wyatt's motion.
So we'll hold on to that, but yeah, I just wanna make sure that we don't leave that and move on.
Okay, alright. What's, we've got a motion and a second, and this is still $10,000. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Oh, dear.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmore.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Rose, you were in the process of making yet another motion regarding this matter.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to delegate future approvals, when needed, outside of village board meetings, for changes to the plan, to their president, Mark McPally, or to Lisa.
I second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I'll abstain, just 'cause I think I have to, but I understand it.
It wouldn't have mattered anyway.
Alright, okay, Brian, we've accomplished what we.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Do you need me for anything else this evening?
I don't think so.
Nope.
Nope. Good.
Good night.
So, Brian, just real quickly, not if you say that, overall, the construction is moving ahead, there aren't any other complications, I see lots of equipment fill out there, it's, it's all on, it's all on.
You know, on schedule, we'd be looking to have this thing paved. I, I was kinda figuring late September, we've only got two weeks left, so that paving may be the last lynchpin, that may push into October, but certainly, you know, well in time to get grass established and have a nice-looking project.
Okay, alright, thank you. Before we go on to the next piece of business, I'm gonna throw an ad lib, 'cause Mr. Struss is here, you're still on the bike committee. Steve, is there anything that you care to share with us, as far as where you're at?
Yeah, again, Steve Struss, and I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the Friends of the Camrock to Glacial Drumland Connector Trail Incorporated. So we're a new group that's a spinoff from the ad hoc committee that the village formed for this first phase of the, of the bike trail, and we're very pleased to see this phase come to fruition, after, what, about five years we've been working on this. So, and of course, there's always a hiccup along the way, and this force main is, is one of them. I'm happy to see this group work out an arrangement that, by moving a path off-road, or back onto the road, it looks like we can, we can manage through all this and, and not, you know, try to point figures at who, you know, why this all happened, so I'm, I'm glad to see that move forward. Thank you. We're working on another, the next phase, where we wanna go to the north, beyond State Farm Road, and that's our, our next goal, is to make more path off-road, instead of going on State Farm Road and, and up Prairie Road to get to the Glacial Drumland State Trail. So, there's a couple easements that we'll need on private property, we have two of them in, verbally, the third one might be a bit of, more of a challenge, and so we're, that's what we're working on currently, to get that third one. And Invenergy Solar is actually part of that property as well, and they're, they're being supportive, but we have to work with the landowner, of course, to get that, that easement, so that's, that's where things stand right now. So, we're hopeful by the end of this year, we'll have those easements in place. We've already had conversations with Dane County Parks about a future grant, they're, they're very supportive of this project. As you know, they put up $200,000 for this first phase, and so there could be additional funds through them for the, for the second phase. And so, we'll just continue to, to work and, and get, get more path built, so. So thank you for your support, and that's, that's the update. Any, any questions? Okay?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on, we've got a contract here with Ms. Barbara Gekner, Lisa?
As you know, we talked about this back when Barb was retired.
As you know, we talked about this back when Barb was retiring. She was, we weren't able to act on it due to WRS rules. So it is back before us now, pretty much the same contract. She'd be coming in to help us with a number of different things, including finishing, cleaning out the old office, going through the files and so forth that we just have not had time to do on the normal workday, and helping Chrissy and myself as we start work on the next budget, giving her input on where we were at, things we've done and so forth. So she'd be helping us on a couple of different things.
Is this, is this going to be a part-time position or?
It's a contract position, so
Okay, so it could be 40 hours a week or it could be 20?
No, she does have a part-time job.
Okay.
So it will be when she's available.
Sure.
When we're available to work with her and
Do we have an amount in the budget set aside to hire her?
No, we don't.
We don't? Okay.
But she's agreed to ask that to come back here and help us out a little bit, I think.
As a follow-up to Carla's question, do you, even at ballpark, have a sense of like how much time or effort you're looking for from Barb?
No, that's true.
I saw the hourly rate in there, but I was just curious if you even like create a somewhat of a budget.
Yeah, and we could put a cap on it.
Okay.
And then come back.
And see where it gets us, you know, and prioritize what we need time-wise, you know.
Budget work.
Is there a particular area, I, yeah, I guess dialing a little bit, I think maybe Wyatt and I are, we're in the same wavelength here. Since it's not in the budget, and I love Barb, like, she's amazing, and I do want to use her as a content expert because I think there is some savings in terms of like having the content expert deliver that content and make sure that it's done efficiently rather than you guys not being particularly sure of what you're doing and doing it over. But I also, since we haven't budgeted for it, I'm not really sure where to put a cap. I'm not really sure from this early conversation. I like, I think we can move forward with the contract, but I want to have another conversation about what you foresee in terms of her time and her expertise. That's just me.
Would you want that to go to Personnel Committee for that meeting?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, but she's not personnel.
No, but the personnel, yeah.
But it's helping our personnel.
It's Audit and Finance.
Oh, well, whatever committee you guys like.
Could have a joint.
And we can look, obviously, there was some savings. There was time when she was gone already before Chrissy started and
Sure.
So there is possibly some savings there to use toward it, but
You know, my thoughts on this are the same. I wondered where this would go to. And I thought, well, maybe limited to 100 hours or, and I don't know if that's the effective way. Maybe the best way is if we put a sunset on this of 12:31 so that if it comes back and she's still here, then we get, after the first of the year, we get a revisit on this because we could run up with a lot of hours. And, you know.
But we're also asking her to do a lot.
Because you're limiting how much, if you put 12:31, I could have her in 60 hours a week. I'm not going to. But a cap is going to be more effective in
Do you have, where are you in your estimation in terms of hours that you need, like you're hoping for her to be here or dollars? Like, I'm not really sure if you're in dollars or hours, but do you have some plan, idea?
We do, and we haven't talked about it a whole lot in depth. I know we did at the board level back a couple months back. And, you know, I think once, if she can get in the old office and concentrate on it, we've been working on it for two years, but we go in there for an hour at a time if and grab files and move, you know, we haven't had time to go in and do the work.
Yeah.
People have talked, you know, have high school kids come in and help. They can't go through our files. One, there's confidential material. But not knowing what needs to be saved, what needs to, you know, so to be able to go in and concentrate on it, it's going to go a lot quicker than the two years it's taken because we don't have time in our day-to-day schedules to go in there and do the work. You know, budget-wise, obviously, she's not going to be doing the bulk of the work, but to be there as a resource for Chrissy, you know, we can look at Barb's notes from last year and piece together what she did. But it's a lot easier for Barb to say, yes, we did this because of this, this money was shifted there, this is where those funds come from. I can talk to her and get more information on
Yeah.
timing and
I would approve the contract at this point.
Yeah, and if we want to put somewhat of a cap, I was just doing back then after math, there's about, if we start in October, there's about 13 weeks left in the year, four hours every day. So if she's working part-time, the other part-time is this, $35 an hour, you're at like $9100. So, I mean, cap at 10, we could even shortcut that in half, cap at five to start. And then that's roughly two hours a day through the rest of the year.
I would support 5,000.
We could start at five.
Yeah, I'd support five.
Out of what pile of money does that five come from?
If you run out, Lisa will let us know.
I don't know. That's, I mean, it's a good point. I don't know where it comes from, but it gives us something to start with or we could
It would come from contracted services, which doesn't have that budgeted and money could be shifted to it looking where there's
Do we have money to shift? Where are we shifting from?
Yeah, I don't know for sure.
Okay.
It has to come from the reserves.
But there usually is.
When did you want it to start by? September 20th was the contract? I think that's what it said. It was September 20th.
Yeah, I think that's what we had, knowing when we were meeting. And, you know, it could be pushed back or reversed or whatever. Where I am going to be scheduling the public works meeting or personnel meeting next week, so we could get some more definitive and have it for the next board meeting.
This is work that you need to get done, right? Have to get done? This work has to get done? Yep.
I keep being told that we have to get the room cleaned out.
And it's not something that you could hire, say, a consultant like Baker Tilly to do, right? And I'm asking that because their rate would be like 200, 300 bucks an hour.
But can we move it to the next budget cycle? Is that too far away?
We could, we could, especially the cleaning out person. Do we want her accessible to help with the budget? If we did, yes.
Okay.
You know, we've had so much turnover
Right.
over the last 10 years.
No, the, I, yeah, I, just, okay.
To have some of that consistency to, you know, I think would help in the budget.
Right.
As I said, do I expect that to be a huge amount of time? No. The cleaning can definitely wait until we, if she's still available. I'm not going to speak for her and say, yeah, she's available whenever we want her needed, but
Sure. I think as a budget resource, that's what I was saying before, is I'd rather get to the source and get that. And I'm willing, that seems like worth paying for in terms of the clean out, which seems like a higher dollar amount just because it's a higher time, then maybe we should budget for that instead of pulling it out of reserves. Just because I hate pulling out of reserves because then we don't have a reserve.
I don't like doing it either, but I also don't like seeing this for two years. It hasn't been cleaned. We've got somebody that can do it. I'm with Wyatt. I think if you put a $5,000 cap on it, we'll just have to go back to Audit and Finance and they've got some sharp people there. They'll
Well, could we use COVID funds? Because you're, a lot of your times was dedicated towards COVID, other stuff. Is there any, can we charge it back to anyone? It's worth a shot.
Okay. All right. Wyatt, did you want to make a motion?
One last question, Lisa. For, can, if, say we approve the contract, but we, can we delegate the cap to Audit and Finance next week, sort of have some of these questions we want answered?
To Personnel.
To Personnel next week and then have it be like officially closed up there at Personnel next week with some of these questions answered and potentially the COVID question too. Can COVID funds be used for it? Thoughts on that? Okay, all right. So then I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for Barb with a
That's it?
Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
I second that.
But there's no cap on it?
We're going to
No, we're going to delegate the cap to Personnel next week. I mean, I'm going to recommend to the Personnel that it's 5,000, but I don't think that's in my motion necessarily.
Okay.
I'll second. Let's move this one on. Got a lot of things
No, you can give it to Ted.
All right. Any further discussion? It is money, even though we don't have it.
It's not money, it's just the approval of the contract.
Yeah, but at $35 per hour.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And it goes, we're referring it back to Personnel. Okay, roll call, please.
Oh, beer.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmore.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Cambridge Farm to School Temporary Liquor License. Lisa?
I am going to answer this table until the next meeting. They have not met with the police yet. They were supposed to be meeting with the police to get the layout of what they're doing, how they would have a beer tent if they're doing wristbands and so forth. As of this morning, the police had not signed off on it, so we do have one more meeting. So I would ask that if pushed up to
Could I just ask one question? I recall their original application was for Veterans Park. Did they reapply?
Yes, we did reach out to them and wrestle and so forth. They did move it to West Side Park.
So we don't have to approve that move or anything?
No, I just internally said, yeah, we can transfer it to West Side.
Lisa, I'm just curious, is it a requirement every time you try and pull a liquor license like this to meet with the police department?
For events.
For events. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so there's nothing further for us to do?
No.
Okay. Moving on, appointment to the Water and Sewer Committee. Ted or Lisa?
Right now, leading to public members, we are looking at for citizen memberships on the number of different committees in the village. With Chris Breanagh resigning, we are short a village staff or a village board member on that committee. We're also short two public members right now, so we do need a village board member to step in to fill until we fill all the seats and redo committees and so forth, to have a forum for the ones who need to go forward. You know, Mark has said he could step in unless somebody else is interested in serving on that. But we need a member on there before our meeting on the 27th.
Chuck, do you have time?
Not really. I'm getting pretty busy with construction. Let me, let me think about it. I can have an answer by the next, the next meeting. Is the next Water and Sewer before the next?
Before the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It's the 21st, not the 27th.
And actually, it's the 27th. It's been changed because a member is missing. So it is on the 27th now.
Oh, yeah, I'll do it.
Thank you. It'll be interesting anyway, things coming forward on that
Yeah.
committee, so.
That'll be good. Yep. I'll volunteer.
Can we, I'm assuming, because we're looking for two additional village board members, well, one and then potentially two.
Public members.
But I know, but I'm saying we are potentially looking for two village board members to finish out the term for Chris and then for Carla. Can we revisit this discussion, just to not have you on forever, Chuck, if you don't have the time, we can look to having one of these new village board members take over for the rest of their term, essentially.
Kind of temporarily fill the gap. I can do that.
Yeah.
We have that as a future agenda item. I was kind of hoping that we would have, because we have applications or applicants who've applied, but that's not on tonight's
No, we did put a notice in the newspaper and on the village website, giving, so all public have a timeline to know when to apply.
Okay.
So it will be at the next board meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Does anybody care to make a motion to have Mr. Chuck Franklin join the Water and Sewer Committee?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second. I was waiting for Chuck to second.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Carla. All those in favor of having Mr. Franklin?
Vote no.
That's fine.
Oh, this is official. But having Mr. Franklin join the Water and Sewer Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
Okay. All right, we're counting on good things there. Okay, let's move on to unfinished business. We've got the Fire Commission update. In your packet, I attended the last meeting, the materials are there. There is a fire, this was for the Building Subcommittee, and it was their recommendations. Ted, do you remember, you were there as well. You know, I don't want to
I wasn't at the commission meeting, but I
No, but at the Building Subcommittee.
Well, we met tonight.
Okay.
And we're going to, we're going to propose those, those three different, those three different proposals in that little package that you got there, Mark.
Okay.
To the commission.
All right.
And that's the way it was voted on. There's a majority vote to do that. Three of us voted against.
Okay, all right. And the commission, for your information, is meeting this Thursday.
Right, absolutely.
That's my report.
They're going to continue talking there.
Okay, Fire and EMS and the Building Subcommittee. And at this time, the chair here or whatever would like to thank Mr. Bruning for his time serving on that committee. So he helped us out and we appreciate that, Chris. Okay, Energy Subcommittee. Wyatt?
It is me, but I think Lisa, I don't know if you talked with Matt specifically about the proposal.
Yeah, so the attorneys were looking for a expert witness that would prepare our comments to the PSC, specifically looking at growth and so forth. They did get this proposal. And time-wise, they did put the name in with PSC. It said the Ropers Consulting. It did come in less than what was initially thought. And we would need village approval to go ahead and engage with them. I did have this on, obviously, here if we want. Matt will be joining us in the close session via telephone if we want to talk to him a little more in depth on this.
We could talk to him a little bit about it and then when we come out of close, we can make a decision.
Can I just ask, is this money part of that $60,000? Correct. Yeah, in fact, it's less than what we, like, we expected part of the 60 to be $35,000 potentially for consulting, so this is 15 less.
Yeah.
So that's good. Other than that, I mean, I don't know this consultant. I don't know the consulting firm, so I can't say whether he's good or not. But I mean, reading through what he proposed firm, so I can't say whether he's good or not, but I mean, reading through what he proposed, he's at least been involved in things like this recently, which is good, and he's also the only consulting firm that responded to us, or isn't, are he taken up? So we don't really have a lot of options either, it seems like.
Can you say, can you give us some projects that he's worked on?
Yeah, he listed them in there. If you listen, if you read in there, he lists recent municipalities, including the two that were most relevant. Yeah, was the, where did it go? I had it a second ago. His comprehensive plan policies for the solar siting for the towns of Springfield and Cottage Grove. I'm also fine with us waiting to talk with Matt when he joins us later, if we want to ask additional questions of him, if he has additional info, if you guys are fine with that too.
Okay.
So we'll just.
But at this time, we have this, we have to vote on it.
Well, now or after the close session.
We can move this to later in the agenda to, yeah, under item 15, just come out of close session.
Okay, do you want me to make a motion? Do we need a motion for that, Lisa?
Yeah.
All right, then, I make a motion to move item nine, sub dash C, sub dash one, to after item 15.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're going to, we're going to push this back. People are, you're invited to come back after we are finished with close session. Okay, anything else for Energy? Wyatt, okay, thank you. Moving on, item 10, Correspondence, Lisa?
I did put in, we had a resident stop by the office with this letter, and they wanted it shared with the village board members. It is something when Public Works, these again, will bring into Public Works, but we have had some conversations with them on the, but regarding trees and where they're planted, so sharing it with the board at the constituent's request.
Yeah, I think if a constituent has a specific area or tree that is problematic, then we can add that to our list of trees that need to be attended to.
Has he spoke with the village forester? Has he spoke with the village forester yet?
I don't know for sure.
Or Public Works?
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I was gone when this came in and.
Okay.
Yeah, he just, they wrote the letter and wanted to just bring it to the board.
So we will share it with both Public Works and, and with the village forester, and put it on when we do Public Works.
Okay.
Because it did seem like, you know, he was talking about the height of his wife, and so the low-hanging branches, I don't know, Public Works should be aware of that. I guess they're the ones that are.
And the sidewalks, the uneven sidewalks of town.
Okay, all righty.
I think that, you know, Chris should maybe take a walk with our, with MSA and get some idea what it's going to take to get those repaired.
Okay, but at a minimum here, we can share this letter with Public Works.
I wrote the letter verbatim to everyone in Public Works, so just for your information.
All right, okay, thank you, Chris. All righty, moving on, we've got some upcoming meetings. September 20th, Economic Development, the 21st, Energy Subcommittee, 21st, Water and Sewer.
Twenty seventh.
And that's to 27th, Water and Sewer.
Okay.
Oh, 27th, not 28th. Good.
All right. And then, let's see, 28th is Village Board, and then Public Works and Personnel to be determined.
And Personnel, we are looking at the 21st.
Okay.
Lisa, can I have something added to the Public Works? I know that's jumping ahead, but sidewalks, I wanted to talk about sidewalks at that meeting.
Okay.
I know the guy from Town of Country was here, and they had marked the sidewalks, and I forgot to ask him about that.
He even asked if he could leave.
Yeah, I know.
Well, it depends if we want to use Town of Country or MSA.
Yeah, that's just it.
We'll be reverting to MSA, I just, real quick, I know Town and Country did walk through with, where they looked at sidewalks, the whole electronic where they took pictures, they have everything that is being transferred over to MSA, so, but we can put that on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we've got questions and referrals to staff for future agenda items. One is the village board vacancies. There's definitely one at the present time and another one planned. Okay?
And so I did put out in, in the newspapers, well, on the website, that there is one at the current time, there will be a second coming up in the future, date unknown at this point, giving all the public time to know that they are available, if they're interested, submit resumes. We have received two to date, but they have through next week to submit. What we've done in the past is then invite members in, go into close session, and basically do interviews with them before the board makes determinations of who to appoint to the positions.
Can we, are we able, can you send the resumes, like, in advance for us? I know you'll probably have them in the packet, but even earlier than that, just so we have time to digest them a little bit? Okay.
Okay, anything else for future agenda items?
The Water and Sewer, I'm not sure if it's Water and Sewer or if it would be Public Works, but there's a, there was a maintenance plan about her system, I was just curious if that's on one of those agendas?
Yep, there'll be an update on the Water and Sewer, we have started that. Andy Jock is coming out Thursday.
Thursday.
So to kind of walk through some of the things that are new to us, helping show this is what needs to be done and stuff. So some of it has been started, he's coming out to help walk through some of the things that we haven't done that are new to, to us, and there will be an update at the Water and Sewer.
I have a, just a question, we have so much in front of the board right now, so many things in front of the board, do we have, I don't know what else to call it, but do we have any kind of like master level organization of where things are and where things stand, and the last time we talked about it and how things are, like.
With a Gantt chart?
Yeah, like, I almost feel like a conspiracy level.
Welcome to my world every day when I come into.
Yeah, and I, I feel that. But as, as a board member, as we're going through this, I'm like, oh, yeah, that's right, there's this other, and I feel a little lost in the weeds about some very important topics that I would, I'm wondering, is there a way to see that? Or how, how are we managing these items? And can I be part of that visualization of where everything is?
I can start a flow chart, where we are with things. Yeah, there's lots of, lots of moving parts and a lot of different things, and a lot that interact with each other.
How are, how are you, and this, I'm just curious, how are you managing those things? What is your process for keeping track? I'm not, and kudos to you for all of that.
Multifaceted, depending on staff that's working on issues, keeping in touch with them, with attorneys that are working on the different issues, as well as keeping.
The engineers and stuff like that.
Task lists of where we are on things, who I need to be contacting, what's the next step.
Do you see any benefits of releasing some of that organization to the board so we can visualize it as well?
I can try to get it in a form that.
I just, I don't know how you guys feel.
I like Gantt charts. I like making them, so, I like visualizing and stuff too, so I agree.
But I don't, I don't want to say that and have that be an extra job. I'm not, I'm not looking to make more work, I'm just trying to, myself, see where we are in some of these projects in the last time we make contact on them.
With the understanding that the board knows things change on a day-to-day basis.
I do, yeah.
I may give you one thing in a packet Friday, and by Tuesday.
Sort of change.
It may have taken, you know, been taken care of, it may have moved a totally different direction, there may be three different options from it. Yeah, I try to give updates in my reports.
What if, what if the board president had a list of items that we continually refer back to?
Yes, Mark.
I don't know that they need daily updates or emails, it's just like the 15 things that we refer back to every week. Like, for example, there's a well, and there's a timeline on that particular grant that.
Well, I asked, I asked Lisa that, maybe we could get an update on, from MSA here.
Yep.
Right.
Or bring MSA in to give us a report, update, report, because we need to see those plans fairly soon here.
Correct.
Because we want to, we're going to have to start building.
We have a number of timeline things, I don't, I don't want to see them follow, and I feel like it's the board's responsibility, it's Lisa's responsibility to keep everybody on track. I can't keep on track if I'm not entirely, I can't refer back to something to see on what track it is. And I don't, and I don't need the minutia in that list, but I need something, and I have old agendas and I have, but.
That is, that's good continuity of government, if something were to happen and Lisa's incapacitated. Chrissy, you're not fully up to speed on everything that's going on yet, so.
Almost.
Right, so, I want to distill out of your head what, and I agree, best format, Gantt charts are great, but.
Even just a table with like, or just like a list of like the projects and next milestone, like, in a date, and I think that'd be enough.
Doesn't have to be fancy.
It don't need fancy.
I mean, we're kind of doing it, but it's not a flow chart. I mean, Wyatt gives us an update, okay?
We have, right.
Okay, so that, you have that.
Yep.
This next week, or this week, I have a meeting with the Fire and EMS Commission, and we'll go through the records, and I'll, I'll tell you about that. That's a big issue, the two bigger ones. Next meeting, we will be, I'll be talking about this, but the superintendent is coming in, and I expect that what will happen out of that, I'll tell you right now, is Blue Jay Way is going to come up. I'm willing to make a bet with anybody here on.
Oh, you mean, fix it up a little bit?
Yeah, they're going to want that road to be taken care of, and I, we're going to go right back through this, but it's important, I think, that we have the school that come in and talk with us. So that'll probably be something. But if, if we want to follow up on, on all the other issues, and Water and Sewer, we've got Ted.
Well, not everything shows up on the agenda every week, and so we can go back three agendas, and, and now we all go back three agendas. So I guess what I'm saying is, we have a list from multiple agendas, not everything shows up on the agenda, not everything gets updated every week. It'd be nice for me to just have a, put a pin, we have to put a pin in things every so often because they don't show up on the agenda, but I'd like to see all the pins somewhere, in a shared document that we can all see all the pins and the deadlines, so that, if, if there is a deadline, if there is a grant, if there is a decision that we're not dollars and we're not scrambling and we're not running behind and we're not fixing, we're proactive instead of reactive to some of these issues. Because all of the things we're doing with updates and board meetings and agendas work to a point, but now we're reaching sort of the level where things are due, and there's no, I'd like some kind of list to see where everything is.
And I don't want to, you know, Lisa, if you think you can do something in short order.
No, I'm asking you.
And I'm going to track 15 of these items?
No, not track it, just write it down, just write it down, put it in a spreadsheet. We can all have access to it.
But I, then I've got to know on all 15 of, of those where we're at, where we left off, I got to get a hold of.
No, no, you don't have to, I just, let's start with the list.
How would I?
Let's take two steps back.
Yeah.
I will create a list of.
I, I will do it, okay.
Items, but you guys, if there's things in particular, I know there's a number of follow-ups I need to get ready for Public Works and so forth, but if you send me items, add this to the list.
Can we add it to the list? But can we add it to the list ourselves?
First, just send them to me so we can create that list.
Okay.
And where we're at on things.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't want to say, here's my list, and then you say, wait, we forgot about this, because.
No, I guess I'm suggesting we ourselves, as a board, create that. That's not necessarily a task I'm trying to get, I'm not trying to give you more things to do.
Well, like I said, if you, to get it created to start with, send us items that you know are still out there. We can start that list, and then it can be a shared document that we can.
Can I make a suggestion, please, just on that? I go back five, say five agendas, six agendas, pull off what we've been talking about, make a spreadsheet, send it to you guys, you guys say, oh, yeah, but then this is what we forgot, if you guys remember a topic.
Yeah.
But I can go back for the five agendas that.
Mark, you reminded me, when are we going to have a joint meeting with Town of Oakland?
I have been in touch with them. I don't have dates, I talked to Susan just last week, Blue Jay Way is, and I don't make contact to her about if they're interested in putting that on their roads grant, because we can't, it's not a municipality. If we could get funding, half of it from the state, could there be discussion then that the two communities do have each, you know, or a quarter of each, you know, based on what's left, but they need to apply. So those discussions are going on.
Okay, cool.
So.
All right, I'll come back to you on this question, but Chrissy, you're going to follow up then, you're going to go back and look at five of our previous minutes.
Agendas, see what's on the topics.
And track the bigger items.
That I know is, yeah, those five.
Okay.
One thing I did forget in my report, one of our Dane County deputies has been promoted to sergeant.
Well.
And he will, he's on paternity leave right now. It is in the process, they do have it out for applications, I believe it ended this week, so I should be hearing. I did talk with Deerfield today, we are looking to send a letter to the Dane County Sheriff's Department saying, we want him to stay on the contract until the replacement is ready. Because their initial was, he won't be coming back to the contract after FMLA. Well, if a new person has to be road trained, we're looking 12 to 14 weeks before they're road trained and could start here. In the past, we have kept the current person on until the new person is ready to step in. So we're preparing a letter to send to the county requesting that Deputy Sinclair stay on the contract until a replacement is ready. That will be coming before the Joint Law Enforcement Committee, when they will go through the resumes they have, narrow it down, and the committee usually does the interviews then and makes the final decision.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. I'm going to bounce it back to you, Eric, these meetings. I'll be seeing Town of Christiana, and I had already approached them about putting together some sort of an intergovernmental agreement, similar to what we already have with the town. And I'll be seeing Mr. Castner, so, this week, and I'll be talking with him about when we can get together.
Oh, that's Oakland, right?
Town of Oakland, but Town of Christiana as well, because I was asked by the board to do that, and I did, and then he's got to bring it back to his group and see what they want to put in there, so. Okay, and the only other one, if you've got any questions, the, at next meeting, we've invited in, and she will be here, it's the new superintendent for the Cambridge Public Schools. So if you've got any questions about what's going on with our, with our schooling here in the community, get those to Lisa or myself, really, in the next week, because I've got to get the questions over to her first, and give her a week's heads up. Anything further on the village board vacancies, Lisa? You're good to go on that? Okay, on to item 13.